Good evening, everyone. This is the February 5th, 2020, meeting of the Hatfield Planning Board. We have a special, we have a public hearing tonight on the agenda, which will start off immediately after a public forum. I just want to introduce everyone to the panel. First of all, is everyone signed in? Did you, I think I saw some new people coming in. Luke, here's a sign up sheet here. So to my far left is Wilma Davis, our Administrative Assistant, Steph Schlidge, to my left, to my right Jimmy Tar and Michael Poshack. So the hearing tonight is for, is, excuse me, I want to just grab my book. So the meeting tonight is for a special permit with site plan approval from the Planning Board for, on 77B West Street, USA Waste and Recycling, Inc. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the representative of the applicant to come up and discuss the special permit. And then I'll ask if there's any supporters of the meeting in the audience to make, if they wish to make any comments about the proposal. And then if they have any questions of the applicant, to make those through the board. And then we'll ask if there's any opponents of the project, and their comments will be entertained. And again, if they have any questions of the applicant, to ask those through the board. The Board will at any time ask questions of the applicant or supporter or opponent as we move through the public hearing. At this time, we will either close the public hearing, the Board will deliberate on the project and decide either to make a motion to approve the project with or without conditions, reject the project, or continue the hearing to a future date with instructions to the applicant. So with that, I'm going to ask if you would introduce yourself. And I do want to note that this is, maybe you can discuss the nature of your application relative to the existing special permit with site plan approval that was issued for the previous operator of this property, Alternative Recycling.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Murray. I'm representing KR 77B West Street LLC and USA Waste and Recycling tonight in relationship to the special permit application with site plan approval for 77 West Street. I'm joined tonight by Eric Fredrickson with USA Waste and Recycling, and also Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys. And what we've done is we've submitted a special permit with site plan approval application for 77 West Street for a continuation of the existing operations that were operated there by Alternative Recycling Services. In October of 2018, USA Waste and Recycling purchased Alternative Recycling Services and is utilizing the site for a very similar operation as to what Alternative Recycling Services is. We have, in response to the Planning Board request, we have submitted this application and a new site plan that shows what we're going to utilize the site for. Its layout is generally the same with access from 5 and 10, coming in the same gate and entering the site that, through that area and driving towards the back. The existing office and truck shop will utilize the same way for truck repairs and for staff. The front building will be used for container repair. And then we will park trucks on the north side where they were existing parking and employee parking and truck parking along the south. And also in the back, the unpaved area, the gravel area will be utilized for storage of containers. The 2015 approval for Alternative Recycling Services had for, allowed for 120 containers to be stored on site. We've increased the request to 150, so we've increased it by 30 containers to be stored. Those are empty containers, not in use at the time while they're stored there. And also, we went from 20 trucks to 34 trucks to accommodate the fleet and to allow for some fluctuation and having a storage of additional vehicles on site. So we, since purchasing the site, we cleaned up the backyard. There was a lot of debris, some old buildings, some old trailers in there. We've removed those. We paved a good portion of the site in the front to alleviate dust and noise concerns that we'd heard from the neighbors and also to help with water quality at the site because we know that was an issue. And we've just been continuing operations there since then. We've also had purchase do so waste off of, that was down, that's located down on Elm Street. We moved those trucks and that operation here just to, because it's a better facility and had better layout and better offices.
So if you can just, so the area for 22 trucks on the north side of the property, that's the existing area where trucks were parked, right? And then, so you're, you're proposing this additional parking area to the south?
Correct.
Where you would add up to an additional 10 trucks?
Right.
Plus 45 employee vehicles?
Correct.
So we're looking at, what you said, 34 trucks?
Thirty, the application says 34. I think there's a, between the plan and the application, there's two, it's really 34 trucks is what we're looking for.
So that's half again as many trucks as what was originally allowed. And the original special permit also, can you talk to the other items that were in there in terms of operation and?
Sure. Would you like me to go through each item?
Yes, please.
The stormwater maintenance plan will maintain. It will be continued on. We followed that now and will continue to work by that. The hours of operation, item two is the hours of operation for trucks leaving and entering the premises shall be between 4:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. That can stay. Yeah, we're not, we're not asking for a change there. The hours of operation for the repair facility garage shall be between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday. No requested change there. There will be no operation of trucks and equipment or repairs to trucks or equipment on the premises on Sunday. No requested change. All trucks and equipment being parked or repaired on the premises shall be owned or leased by Alternative Recycling System. We're requesting the change to USA Hauling and Recycling there. All repairs and washing of trucks and equipment shall be conducted within the repair garage building, and if the trucks are washed out of doors, the wash water shall be collected and disposed of properly. No requested change. A maximum of 20 trucks and 120 containers dumpsters shall be parked in the truck parking area shown on the approved site plan. We did make the change to that as I described with the parking of, putting the containers in the rear of the property where they had been by the prior owner. We're just trying to get it on the permit. Trucks and equipment entering or leaving the site shall use engine braking systems, AKA JAKE brakes. No requested change. The storage of municipal solid waste and/or construction and demolition is not allowed on the site. An occasional overnight storage of a container or truck which contains MSW or CND is allowed providing the container or truck is stored within the repair garage building, and the MSW or CND in the container or truck is hauled and disposed of in a disposable facility as soon as possible. No requested change. A plan titled As Built Plan in Hatfield, Massachusetts, surveyed for Brandon Kelly Trucking by Heritage Surveys, Inc., drawing number 4160AB01, dated June 4th, 2009, with the Planning Board's site plan approval indicated and signed by the Planning Board members shall be a part of the special permit decision. We've submitted the revised plan for approval. Existing buffer vegetation, trees and planting shall remain and be maintained. No requested change. This special permit is granted to Alternative Recycling Systems LLC and shall expire upon change of use as determined by the Hatfield Zoning Enforcement Officer. No requested change other than to USA Hauling and Reci, USA Recycling.
So I know from the Conservation Commission that they have addressed your application to blacktop the gravel driveway parking lot through a notice of intent filing, but they also, and that's the only action they've taken to date, they, although they do recall that the entire property abuts wetland resources directly to the south, and it should be noted, and they've, have been, they have been contacted by neighbors, particularly one of Butter to the southeast, about increased water runoff from the property. Have you shown this new plan to them, particularly where these new parking is to the south? Because it looks like that's the, where the, you're asking for the 10 new trucks and the 45 employee vehicles to be parked. I mean, that's very close to that water quality swale, and it would seem like it's getting ever closer to the, to this wetland area. Has the Conservation Commission seen this?
This specific plan has not been shown to them. We did show them the paving plan in the berm, and I walked the site with the Conservation Commission discussing how we were going to manage the site, and they didn't have any questions at that time.
Was this, was the plan for parking of the trucks along there that presented to them at that time?
No, because that area was already bermed and controlled like it is now prior to this. It was no change to what was out there other than putting pavement down.
Well, and now adding in the trucks?
Correct. But they're not parked in the wetland.
No, but they're parked adjacent to the wetland.
Correct. But the work, but no, we could bring it to them if you'd like, but there's no work in their jurisdiction because we're not going into the wetland, and we're not doing work in the buffer zone, we're just parking vehicles.
Well, I would like the Conservation, I would like to know what the Conservation Commission feels about that.
Okay.
That they're the experts in this area, or if they feel they need to get outside expertise to review it, they do. And that, because that is a change. I mean, we're talking about, you know, adding 30 more containers, which between 100 and 20, 150 is sort of a percentage change, but from 22 trucks to 34 trucks, like I said, that's.
It's a 50% increase.
That's a 50% increase.
Where are your company vehicle, your employee vehicles parking now?
In that area that's.
In that area?
That's where they historically had parked.
Any other questions at the moment right now from Board members? Otherwise, I'm going to ask if there's any supporters.
So I have one more question. In washing your trucks, you wash them indoors?
We wash them outdoors on a mat that collects the water and recycles the water.
Okay. And where does that recycled water go?
It goes, we have a third-party company that comes in and they take the water with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so as I outlined at the beginning of the hearing, are there any supporters of this project that would like to make a comment at this time? Okay. And before I ask if there's any opponents that would like to make a comment, Kyle is here, and I know you have office hours now, so I just wanted if there's anything our building inspector or zoning enforcement agent would like to say.
No, Mr. Murray has done, every time I've contacted him, he's been responsive. So, you know, I know he has reached out to CONCON, Conservation Commission, so why they didn't follow up, I don't know, or if there was a lack of communication there, but maybe for the increased amount of trucks, that is something they should take a look at. But he seems to be very receptive with everything you bring before him, so if there's an issue, now's the time to find it.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to open the floor up to anyone who might want, actually, the gentleman from the survey company, is there anything you want to add at this point?
Yeah, just want, for the record, my name's Mark Reed from Heritage Surveys, Inc. We've been involved with this site throughout the years dating back to when Brandywine owned it, and then back when Alternative Recycling. The plan that you see before you, the existing pavement area has not increased, so that the burned area to the south and the stormwater that collects into catch basins and then goes into the water quality swales that are located in the, on the south end of the property was all part of a notice of intent filing back when Brandywine developed the site. So that the pavement area has not increased in size. Yes, the number of trucks has gone from, that they want to park on that paved area has increased, the number of trucks, but the actual pavement has not gotten bigger towards any of the resource areas. The plan does show all the resource areas. Actually, there is a drainage ditch and swale along the northerly side, which was delineated throughout the years and is shown on the plan, as well as on the southerly side. There's two different areas of bordering vegetated wetlands that are shown. So that, I just wanted to say that, you know, the pavement area hasn't increased or the limit of disturbance, there is no change to that relative to north and south.
It just became paved with blacktop.
Correct. It was, it was oil and stone, and then it became blacktop.
So this whole parking area for up to 10 trucks and 45 goes, is already paved?
Correct.
Okay.
It was oil and stone, and recently, Mr. Murray got approval from the Conservation Commission to pave it with, to in this asphalt pavement.
And just, so I understand, the dotted line to the south of your, yeah, that's your property line?
No.
Yeah, where is your property line?
That's actually, that's actually just a match line between the two sheets.
Sheets, okay.
The property line is further to the south. There is another parcel of land that is owned by them, which is wooded and contains wetlands and a portion of the water quality swale, so that there's two parcels. A northerly parcel that has, contains the building and the pavement area, and then the southerly parcel that contains the water quality swale, woods and bordering vegetated wetland.
Okay.
And then there's a match line to it.
Yeah, right, that's the, that's the west side of that property.
Otherwise, the sheet would be.
Yeah, right.
Twice as long.
Okay, all right.
So that's the only thing I wanted to say about, you know, the site in itself.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I'm going to open it up to the audience, if anybody, if you, if you want to make a comment, it would be beneficial for us and the camera if you came up to this front row, sat by one of the microphones, identified yourself and where you live and your, and then whatever comments or concerns you want to raise, so. This one here is fine.
He could stand there too.
If you, if you want, it's up to you.
All right, I'll do that. So I'm Luke Longstreet, for those who don't know me. I actually live at 152 Pantry Road, but I own a woodlot that abuts this property.
Can you point out or suggest where, to the south?
It would be to the southeast of it. I was the one who raised some concerns with Conservation Commission, mostly because I have a pretty extensive background. I have a bachelor's degree in urban forestry and community planning, so stuff like this is something that's right up my, in my wheelhouse, GIS mapping, all sorts of stuff like that. When you take a GIS overlay of this site from two years ago before USA bought it, there is an extensive amount of woodlot that, in, it goes to the west on the northwest side that has since been cleared, and it is within the delineated wetland buffer according to the Mass Oliver GIS overlay maps. So that in itself is an issue. Second of all, large amounts of hard pack were brought in to create the gravel area that's in the back, and I'm curious to know if there was ever any sort of soil samples done, because there's all sorts of rumors about what could be buried at this site from previous owners. And in terms to address the fact that the debris was removed, it's not, because I have pictures of old septic tanks piled up in the back of this property on the west portion of it, and dirt pushed over them. And I have, excuse me, photos and videos of all of this that I can submit to the Planning Board. Really, I have a whole presentation, but I was running late getting out of work today. I wasn't able to bring it. And so those are some of my concerns. Some of my other concerns are also the water runoff that's coming off of the paved blacktop. Really, anytime that you go from a gravel lot, and to say that was oil and stone is kind of an overreach, because it was probably 15 years ago when it was oil and stone. Since then, it's been gravel and peystone has been trucked in continuously to, you know, take care of the low spots, so it's not a maintained oil and stone driveway, it never was. So to go to blacktop, there needs to definitely be some more stormwater mitigation that's going to happen here, because the catchments that they have there and the buffers, from my professional experience, are nothing that is adequate for the size of a lot that they have here. Not to mention the fact that there's trucks coming in here, you know, they're, they're dripping oil all over the place. Yes, where they wash the trucks may be contained, but the rest of it's not. There's no curbing on the sides of the lot. I mean, there's a whole lot of stuff that needs to be addressed here, just in terms of, you know, water quality and site plans, let alone the truck traffic that's going to increase here, so. And then if the back part's going to be used for dumpster storage, I do a lot of trucking it out of the Southfield, Connecticut CNS, and in front of that is a dumpster storage facility that USA owns that, and it's a disaster. There's dumpsters stacked inside of dumpsters, there's, you know, bits of trash and refuse and scrap metal kicking around, old truck bodies that are stored in over there and stuff. And it's, you know, dumpsters of all makes and kinds, there's USA dumpsters, other dumpsters from other companies that, you know, USA has bought with their exponential growth that they've had, so. I mean, it's nothing that I want anywhere near my property. I don't think anyone in this room would probably want it near them. And quite honestly, it's affecting my woodlot. I usually see deer and turkey through there all the time. I mean, I spent extensive amount of time in the woods, and I saw maybe four deer the whole time. So it's, wildlife's definitely being affected as well, so, I mean, I don't think this is something that we can really turn a blind eye to. I like the fact that, you know, Route 5 is kind of getting developed, maybe with the sewer line project and stuff like that. Not opposed to that, but it needs to be done properly, and I feel like it really hasn't been, so.
So I, I actually am concerned, similarly to Luke, about the fact that, you know, your stormwater management plan was initially for a gravel and oil, you know, pavement, if you will, or area for parking, and now you have an impervious surface there, whereas the previous surface was, there was some permeability. Right, am I correct? I'm looking at the surveyor.
There's a slight increase between oil and stone and gravel, hard packed gravel to the two minutes concrete? Yes, there is.
And so was the, was the stormwater management plan adjusted to reflect the fact that there would be now this, you know, decreasing, you know, concentration in terms of the amount of water and runoff?
We looked at it with our engineering firm, and we feel that there was adequate maintenance, the water quality swale can adequately handle it. And in addition, you're going to get less runoff of floatables or actually solids, because there is no solids anymore going into the system, so the water quality swale should be even more adequate to handle it.
Was that ever presented to anybody, to the Conservation Commission?
It wasn't requested by the Conservation Commission when we went, but then noticed of intent.
Well, part of the runoff swale that we're talking about is a ditch that I don't even think is, you know, halfway up to my knee, and there's, you know, eight-inch trees growing out of it, so it's nothing that's ever been maintained or improved.
That's not, I don't believe that's true, because we clean that out and we maintain it, it's mowed, it's taken care of.
I have videos of it and plenty of pictures to back up.
If you were on our property, you sure? Because that's our private property, you're not taking videos?
Yeah, I can, I mean, I can, there's a woodlot that's next to it that you can see all of it from, that's not your woodlot.
But the water quality swale is active and functioning.
It's in another of Butter that we can clearly see all of this from, that I have permission to be on their property.
I mean, I am concerned that this plan was not, has not been presented to the Conservation Commission yet with the additional truck area adjacent, particularly adjacent to the water quality swale. It would seem to be that that would be a natural place for them to.
We understood, we had met with them, we walked the site. It hasn't been brought up by the Planning Board when the application was submitted. Is that something you'd like us to do? We'd be glad to do that.
And has CONCON looked at the parcel since it's been paved to check water runoff?
We were, when we walked it, I believe it was after paving, but I can't be, I'd have to check back on the dates, but I walked with two members.
And when was that paved?
It was paved last fall.
If, the walk did happen after it was paved, and that was one of the concerns that I had brought up to Conservation, that it was paved before anything was able, it really to be, to stop the paving from happening, so.
And as far as the berms, there are berms in the paved area on both sides.
And was there a building permit given for the paving?
There's no building permit to pave it.
For that volume?
Is there a permitting process for paving?
Planning Board review and Conservation would be, would be it.
Okay.
But there is no, no such thing as a building permit to pave a lot.
I mean, we asked you to come in for a public hearing like a while ago, when it probably was before the paving even happened, so that's kind of an odd thing.
But I came in for the paving, and you approved the paving, that we could do the paving as long as we went to wetlands.
So I don't think that's.
I came in before you, and the request was to go to Conservation Commission, request approval for it there.
Right.
And then we filed this application that your request also.
Right, but, so, and so the Conservation Commission approved the paving before you paved, or did they?
Yes, before we paved. I had to file a notice of intent and come to a Conservation Commission hearing, and they approved it.
Yeah, go ahead.
There was a CBA variance on that, and it was owned by Brandywine that said no pavement. So did you file that CBA variance?
I'm the building inspector, I didn't file anything, sir.
But I'm saying, there was a variance on that property that stipulated no paving?
Mm-hmm. I'm not familiar with that other one.
Yeah.
He was sent to Conservation for this exact thing, because I could see maybe there's a potential problem here. So I instructed Mr. Murray to go to Conservation. He actually did what I told him to do, because I thought if there's concerns, let's hit it before he does it.
And Conservation Commission approved the paving?
I believe so, sir.
Well, I think it would be real important for us to get in writing from the Conservation Commission.
Well, they did, they did, that's what Bob Hennessy sent to me. The only work we've permitted during my tenure has been the application of blacktop to a gravel driveway parking lot. He says previously permitted with conditions through a notice of intent filing.
Yes, that's what we did.
And, but, okay, so Luke, do you have anything else at the moment that you want to add, or, or I want to make sure that other people have a chance to speak if they would?
No, I was just trying to go through my emails, through my email thread with the Conservation Commission, but I've pretty much said my piece, so.
And you met with them, Conservation Commission?
Through, yeah, I met with a few of their members, and then it was mostly through email correspondence. We were going to try to set up in the springtime, when stuff wasn't quite as frozen, we could see maybe some water movement, to go and do a site walk of it. Obviously, it's not springtime yet, so we'll, we'll see how that goes, but, I mean, there's a lot of concerns with the, with the property.
So, okay, anyone else? And then I'm going to add some questions for folks. Yeah, go ahead, come up.
Thank you. David Laesner, I live in 81 West Street, I'm there at Butters to their north. My concern is not as technical as Luke's are, mine are more of the vehicle, increase in vehicles on, on site. Mr. Murray, right?
Yes.
Mr. Murray acknowledged that it was supposed to be 20 vehicles currently. My guess, under approval of the Board here, it could increase to 34. But from my property, there's been 30-plus vehicles for a long time now. I just walked my property line this past weekend, Sunday, when they're closed, and there was 30 some odd vehicles that I could see from front to back. So that's one concern. They're already violating the 20-vehicle policy, or ruling, so if you give them 34, what does that mean? You know, 45, 50? I mean, I don't know. Another concern I have, which hasn't been mentioned, is a fuel tank got put in, I believe, without your approval on the site plan. I believe that was something at one of the last meetings, and I, maybe I'm wrong, maybe there was approval, but I thought when I was here last, it was discussed that they never came forward to put the large diesel storage on site. Again, maybe I'm wrong with that, that's just how I recall it. And secondly, my understanding is no garbage is supposed to be stored on site, and I routinely, on my way home from work, I'm following trucks from Amherst and Hadley, and I don't know where your vehicles dump at the end of the day, but at 3:30 in the afternoon, they're pulling into your yard, coming from east, I'm sorry, Hadley and Amherst. So I don't know where they're dumping it out there, maybe they are, but I don't know what facility is where they're dumping their garbage. And I have had an increase in garbage being dragged onto my property, and I'm not talking on the front of 5 and 10, I'm talking about in the back field. I went over to their office and spoke to somebody, and I was told by the person in the office, oh yeah, we watched a bear drag stuff across the ditch. And, and I was flabbergasted that that's how the reaction was, and I ended up having to pick it up. And I'm like, well, I shouldn't have to pick it up, I'm not responsible for it, and a week or two weeks later, it's still there, and I had to go pick it up myself. I think those are the biggest concerns. Is there anything else?
Smell.
Oh, yeah, with the increased trucks, I mean, we've been in that property now for 17-ish years, and. And it's always been a nice property. But with the increased trucks, I think the smell, which is already at times unbearable in the warmer weather, when we're trying to enjoy our backyard, I'm just concerned that that's going to be a continuation of a problem with the odor of the garbage trucks or the garbage in the trucks, for all I know. I think that's all I have.
And then extra storage, the extra dumpsters that are supposed to be back there, what, how do we know they're, I mean, they're going to stay clean? They're supposed to be clean, right?
Mm-hmm. We're required by the Massachusetts DEP to maintain those containers as active. We cannot store containers stored with solid waste in them.
But what about the issue raised about full trucks coming in and sitting overnight?
They're only allowed, in the permit, we're allowed to store them inside the building. We are not storing full trucks outside.
Well, are they allowed to have anything in them?
No, there's, they need to be empty.
I don't know where you dump them, then. Where?
They're maintained disposal all over the state of Massachusetts, in Western Mass.
I mean, I brought pictures to Kyle where I can see the clams of some of those trucks. This is a while ago, that have garbage bags still stuck in them. And to my knowledge, nothing ever happened with that.
Guarantee if you go pull up on a couple of trucks, they're full right now.
I followed full trucks on my way home as well.
And I don't know what you, you had said the different types of waste and it's not my business, so I don't know what that all means. But from my property on the side of your maintenance building, I routinely see container trucks that have what looks like, it's probably cardboard or paper packed in them. I don't know if that's considered solid waste, if that has to be disposed of. I can see tarps over them, holding them in, the stuffing, you know what I mean? I don't know if that falls within that.
It's recycling material, it wouldn't be considered solid waste.
So, that wouldn't be allowed to be stored?
They could store that.
That you can, okay, that I didn't know, so I.
It's considered municipal solid waste.
You know, and then there's, this Sunday when I walked my property line, I could see there's a short container box with metal. Is that considered recyclable? So, that does not have to be taken off? Okay, I didn't know that.
I want everybody to understand is we don't want to be a nuisance anybody. We bought an operation, it's been existing for many years, it's been permitted there. We'd like to continue on, expand it a little, improve it, and have relationships with our neighbors and talk to them. Unfortunately, I didn't hear anything about you coming over and talking about the bear with whoever was there. Kim, who is the manager there now, is very interactive, a very good manager. She'd be happy to speak with you, Eric, or myself, with concerns. We don't want to have concerns. We want to be a part of the community and not be a nuisance.
And to that, and I understand your business and you have things you have to do, but when we bought that property, it was not a trash recycling company. This has been the last, alternative recycling was only there for, what, three, four years? Five years, maybe, before you folks?
But there was a, there was.
There was Kelly Trucking.
Prior to that, yes.
Yeah, but it was a much different neighbor business. This has been a 180-degree spin on our property with what we now see. I see more predator animals going through my property. I'm assuming because I can smell the sweet smell of garbage. I mean, I know the trucks, even if they were empty, they have an odor. I get that. But I've noticed more predators going through my yard. I can't let my chickens out anymore. I know that sounds foolish, because they're getting pegged off more. And I'm not saying it's 100% because of that, but I have to believe that with that enticing aroma, more animals are starting to come through as well. And that ones that I particularly want in my yard. I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me? Or if you have any questions?
So, what we don't have in front of us is the previous site plan that was approved, you know, for alternative recycling? Because I do want to address the question about the oil or gas tank that you put in. And whether or not, I don't remember, I mean, it's been a while now since we approved that alternative recycling, if there was a location for a new tank on that.
It was not on the prior plan. It was, when that was put in, we permitted it through the fire marshal, fire chief, and I believe through Kyle.
Yeah, that would be through me, be the fire marshal.
Fire marshal, yeah, so.
Well, we could really use a sign-off from the fire department on that one.
Well, I'm sure they did sign-off on that. But I mean, I think at a minimum, I, you know.
It seems like we need to do more research.
Yeah, I want the Conservation Commission to see this plan and I want to hear from them how, what they may require in terms of additional storm water management as a result of particularly your request for the additional trucks. I will say, I mean, you know, personally myself, I'm, you know, 150 versus 120, you know, empty containers. I mean, it's, 120 containers seems like an awful lot to begin with and there's another 30. But, but the, you know, 50% more trucks is, that's a significant increase in what we had originally, you know, thought would be out there, which was an increase from what was there before. So, you know, it was sort of a, an expectation that this would be maintained in a, you know, it's a tight lot, there are houses on either side, there's houses across the road. This is, that's a, that's a significant increase in what originally we were thinking would be allowed there, what the neighbors agreed to or thought of and commented on the last time around. And so, I'm personally concerned about that. Yes, Mr.?
You know, the town of Rowell is not too far away from there. Where's the aquifer zone? How close are they going to be to the water supply?
We are aware of that and we know in relation to where we are, where that's located. None of our trucks are parked in that area.
I know, but you should have a maximum, well, the water just don't come in one spot.
Understood.
It's called the aquifer zone.
There's an IWPA protection zone. We are aware where that zone is and actually our property is shaped in relationship to that zone. But we're not, we're not putting anything in that area.
Can you show us on the map here where that is?
It's to the back of, it's not shown on here, but it's back to this back piece of the property. The well is over here somewhere.
So, but where is that zone, if you will?
It's not shown on here, but I'd say it's somewhere right up in here. Guessing, I don't have it on here though, so.
I can forward you the GIS map, so I have it all.
Well, I think we're going to want to have that. Is that something that you, as a surveyor, can add to that map? To put that in where that buffer zone is?
Yep, we can look at that, yes.
So, we know exactly where that is in relationship to where that storage area is for the containers?
And the storage area, is that, what surface is that? Is that pavement or gravel?
It's been gravel, it's still gravel.
Okay, are there any other comments that people have? All right, I'm going to, I'm going to ask for, Wilma's not here, but you can pick it up on the video. I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing for the moment.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the USA Waste and Recycling Special Permit.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now amongst ourselves, I would like to continue this hearing pending comment and input from the Conservation Commission on this plan.
Yeah, sure.
I think that's a great idea. It'd be greater if we could get somebody here.
Yeah, to have Bob Hennessy or someone from the Conservation Commission come.
Right.
We could even move this to our next hearing, our next meeting, which would be March 2nd.
Is it the 2nd or?
Fourth.
Fourth, March 4th.
And to get a letter from the fire chief.
Yeah.
And to do some research on the alternative recycling, what we gave the special permit.
Yeah, so the special permit is outlined here, but we, I'd want to look at it.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see it in picture.
So, can I get a motion to continue the hearing pending your present, a presentation by you to Conservation Commission on this new plan? As well as additions on this plan to delineate that town of Rowell buffer zone as it relates to particularly the empty container storage area?
Sure. We can also provide you a copy, a full-size copy of the plan that was submitted with the alternative recycling application.
Yeah, it'd be good.
Yeah, well, Wilma has it in our files, but yeah, that would.
But she doesn't have it.
Well, I think it'd be good for Conservation Commission to see that as well. So, can I get a motion to extend, to continue the hearing?
Yes, a motion to continue the hearing.
Is there a second? Second, right. Jimmy, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Night, thank you folks for coming tonight.
You want me to get Wilma?
Huh?
I go grab Wilma.
Yeah, why don't you, yeah. I think, Kyle, can you let Wilma know?
Oh, yeah.
Can you let Wilma know she can come back in?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah, okay, thanks. All right.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, agenda. Is there anyone here from Treeworks?
Nope.
Okay.
Treeworks is the solar people?
No, Treeworks is the marijuana manufacturer that we provided a special permit to. And they're probably getting pretty close to having that expire on them.
Probably. And they don't have their license yet.
They don't have their license yet. And I actually was curious as I drove by there just today. There's nothing happening there at all. I mean, it's just an empty site. Okay, so.
You're not from Treeworks, are you?
No, okay. So, the next item on our agenda is to discuss our public hearing for March 4th on, excuse me.
We're not doing Brandon B's? Is that not?
Oh, is Brandon here? Oh, you just came. Oh, oh, good. Yeah, thank you, Brandon. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, come on up.
Doesn't matter.
You can sit there. Yeah, just identify yourself to.
I am Brandon Blank from Big B's Auto Body.
Okay. So, Brandon, I know that Kyle recently sent you a letter regarding vehicles on your property.
Yes.
Yeah, and we just want to make sure that you, that we're all in agreement and on the same page as to what we approved back in March of last year, actually, regarding your property and specifically that you're limited to seven vehicles at the front end of the property at any one time?
Yes.
For, and those would be the vehicles that you would be selling, if you will? The ones that you would be putting on the market? And that, and that all other display vehicles must be set back at least 35 feet from the front boundary line? And queuing of vehicles on the site must be accommodated in the side or rear yards of the building? And, and maybe you can just talk a little bit about, because I know I, I actually lived near there, so I drove up there shortly after Kyle mentioned to me that he had gotten some calls and he went up and took a look. And there were quite a few vehicles up there and number in, looked like disrepair. I don't know if they could ever be repaired. Some of them looked like they were.
Yeah, they do look like that when they usually first come to me.
Yeah.
Usually, I know I've never had seven vehicles for sale. I just haven't reached that number. And most of the time, I try to keep all my other repair vehicles to the back or to the side, so it's completely separate.
Okay.
I know sometimes like after snowstorms, it gets a little chaotic with people dropping their cars off and they just kind of plop them in my lot and I got to move them and work on them and stuff, but.
Okay. Well, I know that Kyle is, he reported back to me that he had a good conversation with you and you guys have, you've already sort of dealt with some of those vehicles that were there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, I mean, it really was just a matter of checking in with Brandon and just so that we're, we understand, we all understand where we stand on these.
I thought there was a little confusion when I talked to him and he said this is the best way to straighten out, make sure we are all good and I'm doing the right thing and.
So, do you anticipate actually selling many cars up there or is it?
No, it's more of just like an added addition to my repair business. Like I said, I think I usually have about two cars on display for sale. I think the most I had was four. But, I mean, I can't see myself selling tons of cars, but.
Well, you can't sell more than seven at a time.
Yeah, and like I said, I haven't, I haven't reached that number yet. To me, that's a lot of money to put out on cars that you're waiting to sell, so.
Right, yeah. So, are these mostly cars that you've taken that people are not repairing, that you're repairing and selling?
Usually, most of the ones that I put up for sale are ones I go to auction, I buy them.
Gotcha, yep.
They might need a little something to fix and put them there.
Right.
If you do have a car that comes to you, like some of them, if you were able to get any of them that I saw back out onto the road, you're a real wizard. Because they were.
Yeah, no, there was a couple this last storm that were pretty bad and the insurance companies wound up taking them.
Okay, so they're there, some of them were there just sort of temporarily?
Yes.
Okay.
Sometimes, usually insurance companies pick them up pretty quick after they've been totaled, because they don't want to pay me to let the car just sit there. So, they usually pick them up pretty quick.
I think it's fair to say that what the neighbors are concerned about when say something like that occurs, that, and it could just be that they see them for two days or three days or whatever, but that it, that it doesn't become a growing junkyard, if you will?
Yes.
Or as a junkyard owner once told me, a parts replacement center. Because that's not what we had permitted. And I don't think that's what you are planning or want to have out there, so. Okay, I think I'm good.
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, Brandon, thank you for coming in today.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, take care.
Keep up the good work.
Yeah. Okay, so on our March 4th hearing, so a couple things. And we all, I think, you're never too old to not learn something new. So, you'll remember that we adopted the rules and regulations for outside retaining and having outside consultants paid for by applicants. And that was all well and good, except in reporting back to the town council about the fact that we had taken that action. He noted that we actually have to do it at a duly noticed public hearing. So, we are just going to do it again on March 4th. We'll discuss those rules and regulations again on March 4th as part of that public hearing. And Wilma is all set to make the necessary arrangements with Daily Hampshire Gazette to have that hearing noticed. The other two things that we discussed, bringing up before town meeting, was making modification to our solar bylaw to actually address the fact that medium ground mount and large ground mount systems are currently listed under accessory uses. And they more appropriately should be in a different section of our table of use to better reflect the actual nature of those. And so, I went, after our meeting, we discussed a little bit where it might end up. And after our meeting, I went back through the table of use and then discussed this with the, with the town council. And he's in agreement that it would be appropriate to move those two uses to Section 5.0 of our table of use, which is actually, it carries over to a second page. So, the full title of that section of the table of use is wholesale, transportation, and industrial uses. And medium ground mount and solar ground mount systems are the wholesale production and sale of electricity. I mean, there's no way of getting around the fact that that's not what those are. And so, his feeling, I had posed this and presented this to him and his feeling was is that that's the appropriate place within our table of use for those particular solar facilities. So, we will discuss at a public hearing a change in the bylaw that will merely, it's really just a clerical issue, will move what is now 6.25 medium ground mount with all of the necessary requirements by zoning category. We're not going to change any of that. And then. And then, uh, 6.26 large ground mount solar generating systems, again, with all of the current requirements by zoning district, over to that, uh, 5.0 section of our table of use. So I'm just reporting that out. If every, and if everyone is in agreement with that, we'll, the town council will put together the necessary language, so it's available for people to review at the town clerk's office prior to the March 4th meeting.
It would be very interesting to see how many people review that information.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing, uh, that we discussed at our last meeting was, um, in light of our conversations around the urban grown ink, uh, cannabis cultivation, uh, was the idea of actually creating a setback, uh, from any marijuana cultivator, outdoor and greenhouse cultivator, from any, uh, unassociated residential, uh, unit. And we talked at that meeting, uh, of a 300-foot setback. So I, um, after that meeting, I spent some time, uh, flying around Hatfield on Google Earth and measuring 300 feet from various farm fields to residential units. And, you know, we talked a little bit about this and I've struggled with this, uh, a lot because, you know, Hatfield was a, is a farming community, it was a farming community, has always been a farming community, and our residential areas have grown in and around where our farming was. At one time, all of the residences, at one time, were associated with farms. Either they were the farmer's home, or their children's home, or a employee's home. And now, some of those homes have been bought by people who are not associated with farming or a, or the farm they once were on. Um, and so at some point, you have, in a community like ours, you're either farming in a residential area or you're residing in a farming area.
Right.
And in some places in town, I think, the, the pendulum has swung and you are now farming in a residential area, but there are still many areas in town where you are residing in a farming area. And so as I looked and flew around Hatfield, so to speak, virtually on Google Earth, um, and there's no magic number here except for the fact that the state has required that no, um, marijuana retail facility be within five, or marijuana establishment be within 500 feet of a school or a, or a daycare center or something like that. I found 500 feet, actually, to be, uh, based on comments that were made that night when we met last from people in the audience and also looking at the maps, that 500 feet is perhaps a more appropriate setback. Because when you look at 500 feet from a residential unit, you are actually then moving into areas in town where if you live in an area where you're 500 feet from where an activity like this might occur, you are living in a farming area as opposed to farming in a residential area. And, um, it would significantly eliminate a lot of what is farmland and, uh, farmscape in Hatfield, but it would actually result in, I think, a favorable compromise in my mind where if a farmer or someone were to desire to cultivate marijuana, I know that legally, under state law, recreational marijuana is not agricultural, but that's a legal distinction only. It's, it's still something that's cultivated, just like tobacco has been cultivated or any other crop has been cultivated. So I've asked, uh, with your concurrence, I'm gonna ask the, the town council to put together, uh, an amendment to our bylaw and, uh, to the, uh, that would require a minimum setback from any operation of a marijuana cultivator outdoors, which is 7B4D1 in our bylaw, and greenhouses, 7B4D2, from any pre-existing residential units not associated by ownership with the operation. So in other words, if the house or houses are part of the operation, part of the property...
That's okay.
And that the, um, the measurement of the 500 feet is from the closest point of the security fence of the marijuana cultivator to the closest point of the residential unit, not the property.
Okay.
Not the property line.
We're talking about the actual house, not the property line.
Actual house.
Okay?
Which is the same, uh, is the same formula, if you will, that we use for, um, retail establishments right now cannot be within 300 feet of a pre-existing residential use and it's, uh, edge of building to edge of building, not property line to property line. Because property lines can be way away from where the actual building is. And so again, that would be what would be presented and available for people to review.
And that's the 500-foot recommendation?
The 500-foot recommendation.
And I'm just wondering, on a procedural point, we have to have some sort of, but, but, yeah, whatever we wanna put, 400 feet, 500 feet, whatever, in order to have the hearing? We can't have the hearing to discuss, to debate that range, or no? I'm just, I'm wondering for a procedural...
From a procedural standpoint, we need, we need to put, we need to put a stake in the ground. Now, at the public hearing, there may be input and we may be persuaded to increase or reduce that or whatever, but...
And that won't mean we have, it'll affect us trying to change it at town meeting?
No, 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 because we would amend the bylaw.
Great, okay.
Per the public hearing, which would then go to the town meeting warrant.
Okay, cool.
And the select board is aware of the fact that we are considering these two potential bylaw changes to the solar and to the marijuana. And at their meeting last night, uh, they officially recommended that we hold a public hearing, that's required by state law, that we actually are asked, we need to let the select board know that we're interested in making some changes to the bylaw, and then they need to officially request us to hold a public hearing on that matter. And they have done that, so we're in...
We're in process.
We're in process, we're in the timeframe.
So in your flying around on Google, did you notice how many properties would be eliminated and how many properties would still be available?
So as I said, uh, well, I mean, I think it's fair to say the UGI property would be eliminated. Interestingly enough, depending upon where they might have had their first greenhouse or where they might have set up, um, they, uh, were, they were actually 300 feet from quite a few of the homes around there, but at 500 feet, there's...
They're out.
That, they're out.
Okay.
That, that parcel would be out.
I think, and again, just wanted to state for record that you weren't picking 500 to make that parcel necessarily ineligible to grow.
No, I was looking more at the fact that that neighborhood area created a situation where, you know, it, you know, that, that sort of gets at that, are you, are you farming in a residential zone as opposed to, uh, living in a farming area? Whereas if you look at 500 feet, you have quite a few areas in town, like on North Hatfield Road, Straits Road, that area, certainly up in, um, well, certainly in the flats, um, to the south of town and, uh, to the area near Old Farms Path Road and, uh, by the Waitley Line.
Yep.
Where you're, you know, well away from, uh, homes. And even if you are within 500 feet, as I said, if you're within 500 feet of some kind of operation like that, you're making a choice to live in an area where farming is the primary activity.
So are we gonna be able to delineate the fact that, that this is a farming parcel and if somebody wants to come build a house afterwards, within 500 feet of that property?
What would be a grandfather day?
So it's a pre, yeah, so it's, so it's only...
How are we gonna deal with that?
So it's only pre-existing residential unit.
Okay, okay.
So if someone moves and chooses to move close to an existing operation, that operation is protected by the fact that when it was originally established, it was, uh, it had the required setback.
Right, right. I just, I just worry a little bit about, you know, somebody coming back and saying, "Hey, listen, my place is within 500 feet and it stinks and I, I don't, I don't want this."
Right.
Another distinction, too, so let's say you had a very large parcel and the front half of it was around a neighborhood, could you grow then on the back half of it as long as it was 500 feet from whatever neighboring residence?
Yeah, so it would be, it would be from the security, required security fence to the building. So if you have a large parcel where you could be to the back of it and that gave you that required 500-foot buffer from the security fence to the first closest residential unit, that, that would, it's not property line to property line.
Okay. So I have one more.
Yeah.
Interesting situation. What if somebody has a pre-existing building lot with nothing on it that's within 500 feet of this grow area? How are we gonna deal with that one?
Well, so we can, I can double-check with the, uh, with the town attorney, but again, it's a pre-existing residential unit.
Okay, so it has to be a unit, not a building lot?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I mean, that, I see that as a potential, "I got a building lot, I've been planning for years to build this house here, now you're gonna screw me over because it's, it's, it's within 500 feet of this and I still wanna build there."
Well, but again, you probably made that choice to live, to have that building lot because, wow, I like all this farmland around me.
Right, right.
And so you're choosing to live in an area where people cultivate crops.
Right, which, I'm just trying to play the devil's advocate a little bit.
No, no, I, I, no, I... And I'm playing the devil's advocate in return.
Good, good, so you're right, so...
So you're, you're, you're sort of, it sort of comes with the territory, if you will, if you choose to live in an area where farming is an active activity.
Yep.
And you may be the only person who buys a house lot in that area, in part maybe because you like the fact that there's farms around you.
Right, right. Okay?
Yeah.
Another thing that was brought to my attention from a resident, like, what if you could get, what if all the butters are fine with having this, uh, I mean, in a scenario, would you, would you make an exception for someone who has all the butters on board or something?
I think that that would then have to go to the zoning board of appeals for variance. And my experience is, is that that would probably be very difficult.
Right.
Yeah. No, I think we have to, we, as, as we discussed at our last meeting, we did not, we did not choose to, um, uh, have a setback initially because we were concerned about the limit it might have on farmers wanting to take up the growing of marijuana as a possible second or crop or an additional crop that they had, and that they have houses associated with their farms. You know, the situation that came up here recently suggests that, you know, we may need to rethink that and this allows a farmer, um, you know, who has it, you know, is, is sort of by themselves, maybe has some houses nearby, but they're far enough away, but they're not eliminated because their house...
Right.
Is right there.
Right.
Because, or a house that they own that an employee lives in or something like that. So, again, it's, 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 the setback is not from houses that are associated with the operation by ownership.
I think it's a good thing. I think, I think it's a, I think it's a real good compromise, and I think that there are probably still plenty of properties around town that would become available if somebody wanted to put a project like this in on them.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, you know, it may take a little more infrastructure to do it than this place because there's already a house and a barn.
Right.
You know, but, but, you know, in the same token, it's not gonna be screwing you guys over, basically.
I think it's a good change.
As, as a resident, do you feel like 500 feet is a satisfactory amount of space?
I think it is.
Okay.
I think it is.
Great.
I think it is, as, as you said, it is the nice compromise between, uh, not eliminating, you know, 90% of the parcels and properties.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and still allow it, but you are pushing it away from residential areas.
Great.
I, I, I think that is a welcome change.
Great.
If I may, uh, in no random, you know, in, or in random order, uh, we went through a bunch of other towns' bylaws. My name's Petrus Van Gill, Nine Crone Hill Road, by the way. And we kinda picked through it, see what others have. I would like to leave you a copy of it. It, it's not a demand, it is food for thought, nothing more than that, uh, just to give you guys some other ideas or things. Now, I would like to personally see a limit on the size, uh, which we currently don't have, um, and, and things like that. There's a, there's a few of them, uh, food for thought and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, great. Yeah, appreciate that. So, again, this will be fully vetted and presented at our public hearing on March 4th.
Okay.
And, um, Tom will make, uh, the necessary language available to us so that it's available, uh, once it's posted and noticed for people to come and review if they wish.
Will Tom be here or not?
I don't think he'll be here for the public hearing, so... Okay, so that's it on those. Yeah, if you can leave them with us, that'd be great.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Again, food for thought.
Yeah, most people don't show up. Thanks for showing up.
Yeah.
I see, I see that.
Thank you.
That's, that's one of our biggest problems, and that's why some of these problems come up afterwards, is no one shows up when we're talking about it. It gets decided, then everybody hears about it, and everybody's got a problem.
Thank you.
Absolutely, great. Good to see you.
Okay, all right, bye.
See you next month.
So actually, before we get off of this, I do want to, um, alert everyone that happens to be watching this that we will be holding a public hearing on March 4th, um, in addition to other items that I'm sure will be on the agenda, at which we will, uh, we will take up the matter of the rules and regulations for, uh, retaining consultants, uh, for technical and expert assistance. We will, um, uh, take up the matter of, uh, as noted, moving the two solar, uh, project, projects, medium ground mount and large ground mount from where they reside now in the table of use, uh, to, uh, the wholesale transportation and industrial section of the table of use. And then, as we just discussed, we will take up the matter of, uh, amending and requiring a setback from marijuana cultivator, cultivator operations in our current bylaw. So that'll be March 4th at 6:30, right? Wilma, we'll do that? Okay, so I think the only other thing we have on the agenda tonight is to...
Minutes?
Review the minutes.
We don't have, I'm sorry, I didn't have them completed, I, I, sorry.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. And actually, as another matter of, um, just, uh, update, Steph and I have been in discussions with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and Jeff Lacy about how we move forward in sort of melding, uh, the, uh, natural resources protection zoning that Jeff was proposing with the open space development, uh, plan that PVPC had worked on, and I think we've got a good process, uh, started moving forward. I mean, it's, remains to be seen, but it looks like we're gonna try and incorporate the, uh, best thinking of both groups to the advantage of both us and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Um, but we're not gonna be doing anything like this for me, town meeting. We're, we're, this is something that'll occur after that, so...
And, and is there a financial, uh, obligation that we're taking on in this?
Um, only to the extent, uh, not right now, and, and part of the reason that we're sort of pushing this off and down the road is that we can get into the next fiscal year so that we can have additional budget money...
Okay, great.
As necessary to, um, to the extent that we do need to retain Jeff, uh, we are looking at getting, we have some, uh, local, uh, technical assistance, LTA they call it, uh, hours from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission coming to us, and they are actually looking for an additional grant from the state that, uh, would also come to our benefit along this as well. So we're hoping for all of those to come to fruition as well. All right, so...
Before you close the, would you tell me what happened that I missed while I was...
Oh, so we asked, um, we continued the hearing and with the requirement that USA versus pollers bring this plan to Conservation Commission. And so we would like, actually, as, uh, in your capacity as AA for the Conservation Commission as well, we would like, um, them to react to this, particularly in light of the fact that they want to put, uh, the, the additional trucks that they wanna add on the site are all, uh, adjacent to the water quality swell and what impact that has on that swell as well as on the, uh, current, uh, stormwater management plan. And then, um, and we would like to actually get a report back from Conservation Commission so that we're not, you know, so that we're not hearing it from the applicant, that we actually are hearing it directly from the town.
And we asked them to include the... And we asked, um, them to include the aquifer zone on their updated...
On their, on their updated plan, yeah. And so what would be helpful, actually, Wilma, is that at the next time we have it, that we actually have, that we, if, when you can, and get the plan from, uh, from alternative recycling so we can see exactly what it...
And that thing that Mr. Longstreet was talking about, the, I don't know if it applies, but he said something, the owner before, alternative, something about how it wasn't supposed to be paved.
Randy Wine, is that Randy Wine?
Yeah.
Okay, you need that voucher?
Yeah.
I found that one, I could not find alternative.
Yeah, so they, yeah, 'cause, uh, Ken Longstreet pointed out that, um, now, this predates all of us on the board. Perhaps you were...
Me too.
Yeah, that when Brandy Wine, they were specifically required to have that be a gravel driveway. And so the question was, at what point did they get a variance or, or some kind of approval to, to blacktop that?
Yeah, I'm gonna go and watch the meeting from when he was here in the fall, but maybe the minutes would be good too because he made a comment that he thought we approved the fact that he could get it paved if the Conservation Commission approved it, but...
I don't really remember.
I don't remember doing, I think he asked, "How do I get it paved?" And we said, "First, go to Conservation Commission." But that means he would have to come back to us.
Well, well, so that, and that's where, 'cause that's, you know, Bob Hennessy then wrote to me saying that he, um, that they did approve, well, and that's interesting because he said, "The only work we permitted for USA Ways during my tenure has been the application of a blacktop to a gravel driveway parking lot previously permitted with conditions through a notice of intent filing." So I don't know.
Yeah, that would be...
Where that, that understanding that it was previously permitted came from.
Mm-hmm.
But that statement is from the Conservation Commission, not from the applicant?
Yeah, this is from the...
Wow.
Right, but, but if the applicant was there saying, "Hey, I've gotten permission to do this. I just need to get an okay from you."
Right.
Yeah, could happen.
Um, are the Conservation Commission meetings taped?
Not usually.
Okay.
Do that.
No, I'm just curious, if maybe...
We could glean some information.
If there's a, if there's minutes to the, I'll leave this with you, the note Bob sent me because maybe you can track down the minutes from this particular meeting and we can see what it is was said and how it was represented?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And the, the engineer surveyor did say that if you cannot find a copy of the original plan, he would provide one for us.
That was my group?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, good.
Yeah.
So if you can't come up with, you give him a call, he'll, he'll get it to us.
I'm so behind with everything. Four-day weeks and one extra day weekend is really wrecking my, my work. You know, that's tough. But anyway, we'll do it.
Um, okay, so if there's nothing else, um, do extend our condolences to the Gospel family at death of Paul's brother, which is why he's not here tonight. Um, if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn this meeting on, uh, February 5th?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.